Good evening and welcome, everyone, to the October 8th meeting of the Xenia City Council. Please, if you would, those in the audience, if you have cellular devices, please turn them off or down or get rid of them. Mine will be the one to go off. And we appreciate you being here and everybody that appears to be staff and council tonight. Mister, I guess I'll pray and will ask for Councilman Timon Scrivens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Shall we? Heavenly Father, we praise you and thank you for this opportunity to gather as the Xenia City Council. We thank you for all the members of the council who dedicate their time and energy and work ethic to this endeavor. We thank you, Lord, for our administrative officials, our Law Director, and City Manager and Finance Director, and all of the staff that work every day so tirelessly to do the work of the City of Xenia.
That's right.
We pray that you would just continue to guide us and lead us and have your Spirit direct us in all that we do.
Please, Lord.
This is our prayer in Jesus' matchless name. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. And Mr. Duke, would you please call the roll?
Vice President Wallace?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Branham?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here.
President Smith?
Mr. Vice President, I'd like to make a motion to excuse President Smith.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we excuse President Smith, who had another endeavor tonight. Would you please call the roll, Mr. Duke?
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
Vice President Wallace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
And at this time, we entertain a motion for the approval of minutes of the September 24th, 2020 meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Branham. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been moved and properly seconded that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Mr. Duke, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
Vice President Wallace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
At this time, it's time for special presentations, and the agenda seems to indicate that we have none. And so, we move right along to audience comments. And we have no members of the audience who are not already staffed. And I suppose those that are here have already commented. Do we have one person? Do we have comments from?
I'm just a reporter.
Okay, just reporter, okay. So, Dean, no audience comments? We'll move right along to old business, seeing none, public hearings, there are none. And new business, Ordinance Number 2020-26, Amending Ordinance Number 2021 to provide appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures for the City of Xenia, Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Duke, please.
Thank you, Vice President Wallace. There are two primary reasons for us requesting an appropriation ordinance this evening. The first is to properly budget and account for CARES Act dollars that the city has received. The city has received two distributions and will soon receive a third distribution related to CARES Act. The total to be received is $2,392,347. Now that there's been some clarification from the Treasury as well as the state on how those dollars can be used, we needed to move some of those funds that were already appropriated into a different account to make sure that we're properly spending down those dollars. And so, we're asking for an appropriation this evening to get those into the right place. The second appropriation is related to our parking fund. Again, this is related to COVID. Throughout much of the year, our parking enforcement revenue has been impacted in a negative way because of COVID. For example, the court was shut down for some period of time. Those meters are a good source of revenue for the city. And so, we've missed out on some of that revenue also. The number of tickets that have been written throughout the course of the year is well under what we had expected. And so, we're requesting tonight a transfer from the general fund over into the parking enforcement fund to cover some of that shortfall. So, we're requesting an appropriation this evening for $15,000 in the way of a transfer there. We're asking that the ordinance be passed as an emergency.
Is there a motion from one of my colleagues?
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Dean. We have a motion. Do we do a second on that one as well, don't we? Yes, yes.
I'll second.
And thank you, Councilwoman Dean. So, we have a motion as an emergency from Councilmen and Councilwoman Dean. Are there any questions, comments? Mr. Duke, would you call the roll?
Councilman Scrivens?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman Scrivens.
Just had one question on the account, the 290-5381. We have 923,000. Could you explain that, please?
Yeah, so that was the original distribution to the city. And when we had originally received the funds, we believed that we would charge this back to the 270 through a chargeback. And so, that 3281 is a chargeback line. But we've gotten additional guidance from the Auditor of State since that time that we appropriated those dollars originally that says rather than doing a chargeback, we should actually do a negative expenditure to our police and fire cap or police and fire fund and to do a positive expenditure then right into coronavirus relief fund. And so, that's a salaries and wage line that we're appropriating the 2.3 million in. So, it's really, that original 923 was the first distribution. We thought we'd do it via chargeback. We've gotten more guidance from the Auditor of State, and so, we're moving it into the right bucket.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Duke, would you call the roll?
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
And Vice President Wallace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next on the agenda is Resolution Number 2020-D-D, also an emergency, affirming that the City of Xenia Public Safety Personnel are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency and declaring an emergency. And I'd like to take a form of personal privilege. I think most of you know by now that I had a fire in my home on last Friday. And I could not believe, I know that we do a great job and our guys do a great job. And they were there before I could get out the back door good. And the police and the fire personnel were just absolutely sensitive to my wife and my needs. And we can't thank them enough for all that they did. And I just think it's appropriate that I give them a shout out and say how well I think they did in my home. And thank God that they got there so quickly because we weren't, got damaged, but it's mostly smoke. And we, no physical damage that much. So, I do want to thank that. So, one of my colleagues like to make this motion as an emergency?
I'd like to hear the City Manager kind of give us a treatise.
Okay, that City Manager?
The item should be brought to the floor first?
I thought we'd.
Did we get?
We need a motion before we get to discussion. Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Madam Mayor?
Second.
We have a motion. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Staff is recommending tonight that council approve as an emergency Resolution 2020-D-D. This would be a necessary step to document the City Council's position regarding the use of our CARES Act funding. Based on the most recent guidance provided from the U.S. Department of Treasury and the Ohio Office of Budget and Management, they're recommending that timely and specific documentation regarding the intended use of CARES Act funding be established for the city and that it's in the city's best interest to make sure that we are documenting all of this according to the guidance that's being provided. As demonstrated in the agenda report and with the resolution itself, this resolution affirms the substantial dedication of public safety personnel for the purpose of response to COVID-19 as prescribed by law and the documents, the city's intentions for use of the CARES Act funding relative to our public safety staffing expenditures. Staff recommends City Council approve the resolution this evening as an emergency as there are some deadlines pending with the implementation of the use of these funds. So, we're recommending an emergency item. And this is consistent after this dialogue with the mayors and managers in the region. This is consistent with what most of the communities are doing, unless they are taking these funds and expending them in alternative manners. So, we request council action this evening.
Mr. Scrivens?
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, do we have to have all of these funds expended by the end of the year?
More or less, yes. And there have been some conversations about extending the current deadline is actually, although I think they're extending, it's supposed to be the end of October. It's being extended into December. But yeah, the funds have to be used. There are, there's the potential for some of the county's funding to be made available for some additional local issues in the communities around Greene County. I received notice today that they're extending their, some of their small business grant programs. So, again, it's a case where the county has to spend their monies down right away. So, that's why they're extending some of these programs. But again, the short answer is, yeah, we have to spend the.
As a matter of fact, the county added another 500,000.
Correct.
To their appropriation.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Duke, would you call the roll?
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
Vice President Wallace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next on our agenda is Resolution Number 2020-E-E, An Introduction Adopting a Five-Year 2021-2025 Capital Improvement Plan for the City of Xenia, Ohio. Mister, do we have a motion? And then, we'll have, hear from the City Manager.
So.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilman Branham. Mr. City Manager?
It's just an introduction, right? We don't, we don't need a.
No discussion on introduction?
Yeah, just introduction. Just need it first. Just need it first.
My bad.
But I would, I would take the liberty of offering introduction.
Please.
Mostly for the benefit of our viewing audience. It is required in the Xenia City Charter in Section 9.12. The City Council must annually adopt a five-year capital improvement plan. This must occur on or before the first day of November of each year. The subject resolution under item C tonight would facilitate compliance with this requirement. Council will recall that earlier this year, we had extended discussion about budget priorities, components of which are capital priorities. And over the course of the development process with our budget or with our five-year CIP, staff has worked to incorporate considerations from council's priorities into the CIP. Staff is recommending council introduce this evening the resolution as listed. This would adopt the five-year CIP. Council, of course, is scheduled to have a work session on this topic afterwards. So, ergo, the purpose of this just being an introduction at this phase. You would certainly have the opportunity and would reserve the right to make any adjustments to the five-year CIP prior to the final approval, which we would seek at our next meeting. As always, it's important to articulate that the five-year CIP is just a plan. There's no specific commitment to projects. There's no dollars that's actually appropriated. Council's not obligated to implement any particular portion of this plan. But it is nevertheless a best practice to implement a five-year CIP and to have that tool available as we make strategic decisions. The annual budget process is, or this is connected to the annual budget process in that the first year of the CIP often does align with the ensuing fiscal year. So, you will see some alignment there. It's important for our public to know the CIP informs on needs related to our rate setting and for our public utilities. To the extent that there would need to be some adjustments, we would have that conversation with council at a later date. Again, this year, I'm really proud of the efforts of our staff under the guidance of council in setting priorities. We've put together, I think, a very good plan that promotes system improvements and quality of life while adhering responsibly to the financial limitations that we have. So, there's some good stewardship associated with the development of this product. As the CIP illustrates, we have a lot of physical needs in our community. We cannot meet all of those needs at once. And so, establishing priorities and goals through the CIP process over an extended number of years allows us a timeline to be able to meet many of those needs. So, this evening, we're recommending Resolution 2020-E be introduced. And then, we'll have more discussion on the details in the work session to follow.
Thank you, sir. And next on the agenda, we have an administrative motion approving the schedule of bills in the amount of $267,103.53. Mr. Finance Director, do we have a motion first and then the, hear from the Finance Director?
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Second? Thank you, Councilwoman Dean. Mr. Duke?
I have nothing specific to reference related to the bills this evening.
Nothing to add?
No, sir.
We'll call the roll.
Was that? Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Finance Director, on page two, next to the last item, 10 lots for $350, that's $35 a lot. That's a sure shot under $180 that I received the bill for. And then, we've got three lots for a buck five. That's $33. That's a sure shot under $180 that I got charged. So, I'd like to have an explanation, please, sir.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have specifics on what was billed to you, if it was just one mowing or any of those details.
It says times 10, so that means 10 mowings.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I can, I can get with the city planner and look at your particular situation. But I don't, you know, I don't have that information in front of me on any of the invoices individually.
I'd like to see the history of that, please. Thank you, sir.
Are you requesting that we remove them?
Well, we'll go ahead and pay him because, I mean, he's done the work. But I want to see that.
I'd also like to know the particulars of that as well.
Sure.
Any other comments, any other thoughts? Then, Mr. Duke, would you please call the roll?
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
Vice President Wallace?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Having expedited the agenda, now it's time for the reports of committees. And the first report is from the Board of Zoning Appeals. And our mayor, Madam Mayor?
Thank you, sir. We met on September 28th. We heard one case, a variance request for a property owner on Crace Drive to replace, expand, and partially enclose an existing rear patio overhang, and it was approved. I would just like to remind anyone watching that we still have a vacant seat. And if you are interested, to please contact our city clerk, Michelle Johnson. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next is Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. And that's Councilwoman Dean?
Thank you. Our meetings are still via Zoom, so they all tend to be fairly short and sweet. So, we go over different COVID grants that are available to help improve the area. So, that's pretty much all else.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Planning and Zoning Commission. And that's Councilman Branham?
On October 1st, we met and discussed a, an issue with having barbed wire fence on top of a, well, barbed wire fence on top of a chain link fence at a new facility that Torrida Independence is going to be building out in industrial park. So.
And what was the outcome?
It passed.
Okay. I'm just curious, is it appropriate to ask a question? Why do we need barbed wire fence on top of a chain link fence?
Basically, just protection to keep people out. They don't want anybody hopping the fence and potentially vandalizing their vehicles and stuff like that.
Okay, it's a vehicle storage lot.
Correct. They have purchased in our lot in our building, a new vehicle storage facility.
Oh, yes.
In the industrial park. So, it's somewhat remote, not a lot of activity around it. So, I think it was purely for security. Yep.
And when you said a vehicle storage lot, I understood it. Thank you. Okay, and now, next is Councilman Dean and the Traffic Commission.
Thank you. We didn't have any agenda items this month. So, it was canceled.
All righty. Next is appointed officials report and the council comments. The City Manager is first up.
Just a couple of reminders this evening. First, as we previously reported, I just want to reiterate, as we're still getting questions, trick or treating is still on for the City of Xenia, planned for Halloween night, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is a rain or shine event. We encourage folks who are providing candy to turn porch lights, garage lights on so the passersby know that. We've put some recommendations out on our social media and website regarding some ideas on how to safely protect yourself and the trick or treaters if you are passing candy out in these COVID times. But again, we will move forward with that program. Also, we are putting together details for Hometown Christmas. And we'll be, I think, able to announce probably after next week, specific details. So, we're looking forward to, again, trying to encourage folks to shop at our downtown businesses, providing an opportunity for kids and families to have some activities in downtown Xenia. And again, do all those things in a manner that's socially distancing and responsible from a health standpoint. So, more details to come on that. And that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mr. Finance Director?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We continue to work through the meter replacements with NICO, Neptun Equipment Company. Many of the residents who have inside meters have scheduled their appointments. And I encourage residents who haven't yet done that to get with NICO and get those scheduled. But I have heard great feedback from them that our residents are doing a really good job of reaching out and getting those scheduled. So, I think they begin those next week and they're scheduled at least two weeks out. So, the schedule's filling up. And so, our residents are doing a really nice job of getting those scheduled for the inside meters. We also recognize that because of the timing of some of these change outs, there is a fluctuation in some of the bills. And some people are receiving bills that are higher than what are normal. A lot of cases, it's because they're being billed for maybe 45 or 50 days instead of the traditional 30 days or in that neighborhood, one month. And so, there should be some relief on the back end where there's a smaller bill that comes once that second period hits and it's for, you know, 15 or 20 days. If there are circumstances where residents think that there is an issue with the bill or something hasn't been built correctly, we do encourage them to reach out to us in utility billing. And we'll do our best to troubleshoot. We've gotten a lot of calls from residents. And so, we're doing our best to look at those on a case-by-case basis and determine whether or not there's an issue. In most cases, we found that, you know, there's a timing issue or sometimes there is a leak or some other issue that we can address as well. So, if you are receiving those and you think, you know, maybe you've gotten two bills back-to-back that are a little higher than what is typical, feel free to reach out to us and we'll do our best to troubleshoot that. So, we are trying to work with residents to the best of our ability to make sure we work through those issues. And we do ask for your patience as we work through it. It's a significant project. And I think we're getting close to, on the back end, to where things are going to become much more normal and standard in the way that the bills are headed out. But I do realize there have been some challenges along the way. So, I appreciate everyone's patience with us as we work through that.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Director. Madam Law Director?
I just have one thing. The City May is counsel authorized at the last meeting to file the Articles of Incorporation for the CIC. That was done. The CIC has been authorized by the state. So, staff is working on getting those next steps together. And we'll be coming back to council with the additional legislation needed to keep that moving forward.
Fantastic. Thank you, ma'am. All right, now it's time for council comment, mayor and council comment. And I'd like to hear from the mayor first.
All right, thank you. Wanted to start by thanking Christina Schaefer and our city staff for the great event on the 26th. I think it was a really good turnout. I was really pleased with the amount of people that I saw, all the food trucks there. We ate there and did some shopping and spent some time in the city tent. So, our staff did a great job and had a lot of good conversations and talked to a lot of people. Also, wanted to mention Rob and Danielle Eldridge, the owner of Route 68 Vintage Toys. They had a toy expo this last Saturday out at the fairgrounds. And they are just doing a phenomenal job. It was a huge event, two buildings. All these vendors that came in, three buildings. Yes, we may have skipped one. Don't tell my children. But.
I'm sure Freddie didn't know that.
I mean, I can attest that we had family that came from out of town for it. There was a lot of people there. And this is something that the Eldrige's are doing. Just, they're doing a great job with their business and bringing people here, having these expos. So, just wanted to thank them. And I'm excited to see what's going to happen next. Wanted to congratulate Mary Carmassey. And she is now taking over McCullough Funeral Home. She had an open house this evening and keeping that business going and keeping the name. In fact, at 6 o'clock, she was going to be honoring Rock McCullough tonight. So, wanted to congratulate her. And then, last, I had a chance this evening also to stop by the Jeremiah Tree and help them with some of their promotions for their gala that's coming up on October, let me say, 30th. And it's at 7:00 p.m. It's a virtual gala that you can register. You just have to go to the website, jeremia tree.org. And there's a link there and it's free to register and then participate. It's one of their major fundraisers. And they're doing a really great job here in our community. They're invested in our community. So, want to promote that for them. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Dean?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Councilman Branham?
I just want to thank our contractors that are working diligently on Colorado Drive. They're keeping the traffic flowing and really, really hitting it hard and getting the job done. I also would like to give a shout out to the individuals that are working hard with the Food Truck Rally. Seems like there was a very good turnout last Friday. And I think that that's going to be a reoccurring event. And I think that that's a great use of our city property there that's getting utilized. So, that's it this evening.
Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, like to congratulate our city staff and everyone involved with the function around town last Saturday. Thought that was an ongoing success. And we have to do something like that more often. Second thing, Mr. President, like to congratulate the girls golf team from Xenia High School. They came in and scored the first undefeated record ever. And over the last two seasons, they said they've set 10 new school records. This one young lady shot an 83. And I don't know if any golfers in the group, but for a weekend golfer, 83 is smoking. So, I just want to congratulate all of the girls on the team. There was Stacy Bexley, Darby Nolan, Grace Bond, Olivia Wagner, I think Brianna Mardis, I might be pronouncing that first name wrong, and Elena Berryman, under the capable, enable coaching of Coach Kent Anderson. He's a future Hall of Famer for sure. So, we want to thank all the girls and Coach Anderson for such a good year on the golf course. And finally, Mr. President, I'd like to just say And finally, Mr. President, I'd like to just say that we had a couple of homeless people over the last period that have gone on to their final reward. One of them, I knew. He was a very troubled individual. And we should always be judged by what we do for the least of these, not how well the stock market's doing and how many millions are being made, but what are we doing for the least of these? Xenia's a city of hospitality, and we need to show our love to people who don't have a roof over their head. Just like to also express condolences to the family of the late Harvey Jamison. Harvey was a U.S. Navy veteran and a star at Xenia High School. And before Harvey died, I said, Harvey, I'm going to try my best to get you inducted into the Hall of Fame. He'd gone to the state in track, and he was a good guard in basketball. In '65, they came in with the WL championship. And then, finally, I also like to express condolences to the family of Fred Mike Wilson. He had passed away, and we went to his home going. And he had been a patient at the nursing home where I know two other patients had passed away from there. So, we definitely want to express condolences to the families involved. And with that, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Dean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything, so.
I, again, would like to thank the first responders for their reaching out to me and my home and the fantastic job that they did. And I, since I actually got taken out of Xenia, we ended up in Beaver Creek on Saturday and Sunday and Monday. We got back to Xenia on Tuesday. But I didn't get a chance to participate in some of the goings-on. And all of, all of the clothes and everything from the house were taken out to be cleaned. And I didn't even think about what all I had to do this week. So, we ended up having to go buy a shirt tonight. But it's, you, you, let me say to you that if you ever thought that a fire could not be disruptive, even if it wasn't extremely destructive, it was still very, very disruptive to our family and our life because there was smoke everywhere. And we thank God that it was no worse than it was and that there was no loss of life and limited long-term damage of destruction. But that's really all I have. I do want to mention that I thank Councilman Scrivens for reaching out, expressing condolences to the Jamison family. I had the privilege of doing that service. And we thank God for his service to First United Christian Church when he was alive. And we really just reach out to all of those folks that are losing loved ones to the COVID and for all of the things that are going on. So, we, I appreciate the fact that we are known as the city of hospitality. And I love it when we have an opportunity to show it, to show it. I think that's it for tonight. We have an adjournment, then we have a special meeting. Is that right? And so, at this time, we'll entertain a motion for the adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam, Councilwoman Dean and Madam Mayor. Would you please call the roll, Mr. Duke?
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Dean.
Aye.
Mayor May.
Aye.
Vice President Wallace.
Aye.
Motion carried.